Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the November 28, 2022 Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and give a brief safety announcement. If there's an incident tonight, please get up, exit the chambers in an orderly fashion, make a right-hand turn, go to the end of the hallway and go down the stairs. If for some reason that exit is blocked, please exit the chamber, make a left-hand turn, then a right-hand turn all the way down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators if there is an emergency. If you need assistance, please ask, and it will be provided to you. At this time, I'll call on -- no, I'm sorry, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll call on Reverend Maggie Gillespie of Wycomico Presbyterian Church for invocation. Dr. Gillespie.
Please pray with me. Blessed are you, Lord our God, ruler of the universe, who has created us, sustained us, and brought us to be together in this place now. The bounty of the earth is all gift from you, gracious one, you who meets our every need and gives us a place at the table, you who calls us to be servant leaders. Today, we ask your blessing on this room, on this building, and all who labor here for the welfare of the city. Help us to understand your intent for us as stewards of your creation, the resources you have entrusted to us, the gifts and talents with which you have blessed us, the doors you have opened to us, the light you have shined for us. In all these things, let us be faithful to you. Help us to use what you have given us to help others, to reduce suffering, and to do our part to repair the world, and let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Gillespie. We appreciate it. I will now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the legislative agenda as printed, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the chair votes aye. Legislative agenda is approved by a vote of four to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Blake?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory. This evening, Assistant City Clerk Julie English will present the consent agenda. Good evening, Julie.
Good evening. On the consent agenda this evening, we have council meeting minutes for November the 14th, 2022, and we also have Resolution Number 3198 approving the reappointment of David Platts to the Parks and Rec Committee for term ending November 2025.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the consent agenda?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. The consent agenda is approved by a vote of five to zero. I would also like to thank David Platts' David here. Or on the -- I don't see him.
Uh-uh.
We'd like to thank David Platts for volunteering again to be on the committee. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2756 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Boucher, good to have you back.
Thank you.
You and the bags are back.
So ordinance number 2756, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Title V of the Salisbury City Code, business licenses and regulations to prohibit retail establishments from providing plastic carryout bags to customers. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2756 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2756 is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2757 for the second reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance number 2757, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department's operating account. This is before you for second reading. No changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2757 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 The voter, did you say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. And the chair votes aye. Motion number 2757 is approved by a vote of five to zero. Too much turkey, I think, everybody. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2759 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Blake? Who was Mrs. -- who was that? Ms. Jackson. Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance number 2759, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending Section 1.16.100 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Waiver of Fines, Authority to Issue Citations, Violations and Penalties, Repealer, to add the categories of persons with the authority to issue citations for municipal infractions and further amending Section 8.04.050 of the Salisbury City Code entitled False Alarms, Violations and Penalties, to clarify departmental responsibilities specific to false alarm fees and citations. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community standards, values, and to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code Local Government Article Section 5202 to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary, to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, and to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas the mayor and council may amend Section 1.16.100 of the General Provisions Title of the Salisbury City Code, and also Section 8.04.050 of the Health and Safety Title of the Salisbury City Code pursuant to the authority granted in the Section 2-15 of the city charter. Whereas mayor and council find that the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of the city will be furthered by amending Sections 1.16.100 and 8.04.050 of the city code to clarify departmental responsibilities specific to false alarm fees and citations. And whereas the mayor and council have determined that the amendments to Section 1.16.100 and 8.04.050 of the Salisbury City Code shall be adopted as set forth herein. So Section 1.16.100 and 8.04.050 of the Salisbury City Code are amended by adding bolded and underlined language and deleting the strike-through language, and I'm going to walk you through that, starting with Section 1. If you take a look at line 7, now we're adding the language and any designee of the chief of police, and that's going to follow all city police officers. The next amendment to this particular section, which again, for the record, is 1.16.100, which is waiver of fines, authority to issue citations, violations and penalties repealer, adding on line 13 and 14 and any designee of the chief or deputy chief of the city fire department. Moving forward to Section 8.04.050, false alarms, violations and penalties, the changes are as follows. Line 14, we are adding the word "shall." Line 20, looking to Section C, I'm going to go ahead and read this new Section C because there are a number of changes here. New Section C will read, "The chief of police and the fire chief will maintain accurate records of false alarm responses. A bill will be sent by mailing said bill to the property owner of record of the subject location, the designated agent, if any, and the occupant of the property, if known, to the director of finance. The director of finance will send the bills for false alarm responses in accordance with the fee schedule and effect at the time of the response." So that's how the new Section C will read. The next change will be found on lines 40 and 41, where we're adding the word "and" between chief of police and fire and striking and the housing official. And those are the changes to those particular sections.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
I got one. So if they're -- if we've got the chief, the chief of police and the fire chief both keeping track of their false alarm records, are we merging those records, or is it one fine for police false alarms, once they hit so many, and one fine for the fire false alarms, once they hit so many? Or is it combined, total alarms?
I think I can speak to that, and Chief Tall, you can correct me if I am mistaken. I think we are coordinating amongst our departments. Right now, the language already provides for city police officers and the fire chief, so it's already been multiple departments involved, and so we're just making it a little bit clearer that we're allowing the chief of police to designate others, and the same for Chief Tall, but it is tracked internally amongst the city.
Any other questions from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2759 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2759 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2760 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Ms. Blake, Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance number 2760, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving an amendment to the FY 2023 general fund budget and the grant fund so as to further appropriate funds for redesign of the Salisbury Zoo's Andean Bear exhibit. Whereas the city applied for grant funding with the Maryland Department of General Services to cover the redesign cost of the Salisbury Zoo's Andean Bear exhibit. And whereas DGS, which is the Department of General Services, awarded the city $250,000 in grant funding to cover the redesign costs of the zoo's Andean Bear exhibit, but that award must be approved by the Maryland Board of Public Works. And whereas it is expected the grant will be approved and that the city will receive $250,000 in grant funds this fiscal year. And whereas to move forward with the redesign of the Andean Bear exhibit, the city wishes to use monies in the general fund in the amount of $250,000 to obtain an architectural design. And whereas the city has surplus funds available in the current year operating accounts to fund $250,000 to put toward the architectural design of the Andean Bear exhibit. And whereas when and if the city receives the $250,000 in grant monies, those monies will be deposited into the city's general fund. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council of the city of Salisbury. Section 1 of the ordinance reads, "The city of Salisbury's grant fund budget B and hereby is amended as follows. Increase transfers from general revenue budget, which is account number 10500-469110-XXXXX by $250,000, and increase design expense budget account number 10500-513026-XXXXX by $250,000. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's FY 23 general fund budget B and hereby is amended as follows. Increase revenue 01000-469810, use of surplus by $250,000, and increase expense 91001-599131, grant match Public Works by the same amount, $250,000."
Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President, just wanted to update council that we are on the December agenda for the Board of Public Works, so by the time this is its second reading, we'll know for sure.
Great. Fantastic. Appreciate that. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2760 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2760 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2761 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Blake, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance number 2761, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wycomico County Health Department and approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 general fund budget to appropriate funds received from the Wycomico County Health Department in the amount of $10,000. Whereas the funds have been provided by the Wycomico County Health Department in conjunction with the Midshore Behavioral Health, Inc. for the Safe Station program. And whereas Safe Station is an innovative program that helps remove barriers to treatment for members of our community who are eager to recover from a substance abuse disorder. And whereas the goal of Safe Station is to provide people with linkage to treatment and recovery services by allowing them to practice self-determination. And whereas the city of Salisbury Fire Department will provide non-emergent medical checks to all individuals that enter the Safe Station. And whereas the city of Salisbury must enter into a grant agreement with the Wycomico County Health Department defining how these funds must be expended. And whereas the accepted funds shall be used to purchase -- excuse me, purchase additional emergency medical supplies and equipment. And whereas both the fire chief and the mayor have recommended that the city accept the monetary donation and allocate the funds to the fire department's FY 2023 operating budget. And whereas Section 7-29 of the city charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the city. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the four fifths council of the city of Salisbury. Section 1 of the ordinance reads that Mayor Jacob R. Day is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore to accept grant funds in the amount of $10,000. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget B and hereby is amended as follows, to increase the general fund Wycomico County Health Department reimbursement account 01000-427301-XXXXX by $10,000, and B, increase the fire department expenditure medical account 24035-456016 by that same amount, which is $10,000.
Questions or comments? I think I have one correction. I believe that the line B should read 24035-546016, I think.
Did I say that wrong?
I think you -- I think one -- I think you --
Flipped a number?
Flipped a number, I think.
Okay.
But we can check that, Ms. English, right? Okay. Sorry. Any other questions from the council?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance numbers 2761 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2761 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2762 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jackson, Mrs. Gregory, Ms. Boucher.
Ordinance number 2762, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Title Health for the purpose of accepting sub-granted funds in the amount of $62,500. Whereas Title Health, in conjunction with the city of Salisbury, applied for funds through the Royal Maryland Prosperity Investment Fund, RMPIF, and whereas Title Health has been awarded RMPIF funds in the amount of $187,755. And whereas Title Health is further sub-granting $62,500 to the city of Salisbury. And whereas all accepted funds shall be used to operate the Salisbury-Wycomico First Care Team referred to as SWIFT. And whereas Section 7-29 of the city charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the city council. And whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of four fifths of the council. Section 1 of the ordinance reads that the city of Salisbury's fiscal year 2023 general fund budget B and hereby is amended as follows. A, increase the Royal Maryland Council revenue account, which is 10500-424540-XXXXX by $62,500. B, increase salary overtime non-clerical expense account, 10500-501021-XXXXX by $37,000. And C, increase various benefits expense account, 10500-502XXX-XXXXX by $25,500.
Any questions from the council?
I just say that, you know, it's -- we know this program works, and it's very grateful for the partnership with PRMC, or I'm sorry, Title Health, in working to get this grant. This is an important program, and it truly helps some of the most vulnerable in our community, and just really, really glad we can keep getting funds for this.
You're here. Any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2762 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2762 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2763 for the first reading.
So moved. Second.
We'll give that to Ms. Blake, and a second to Ms. Gregory, correct, right? No, Ms. Jackson. You two have to change your --
Okay.
Too much turkey. Ms. Boucher.
Sure. Ordinance number 2763, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend Chapter 2.12 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Department of Infrastructure and Development for the purpose of removing the authority to enforce the city fire department code from the director of the Department of Infrastructure and Development. Whereas the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city code requires the need for periodic review, evaluation, and amendment. And whereas the city of Salisbury has adopted the State Fire Prevention Code, subject to local amendments. And whereas the city of Salisbury had previously granted the authority to enforce the city fire prevention code to the director of infrastructure and development. And whereas the city of Salisbury now employs a fire marshal, a deputy fire marshal, and a fire inspector to enforce the city fire prevention code. And whereas the city of Salisbury desires to amend Chapter 2.12030 and 2.14030 of the Salisbury City Code for the purpose of removing the authority to enforce the city fire prevention code from the director of Department of Infrastructure and Development, and also the director of Housing and Community Development Department. Section 1 of the ordinance reads as follows. Chapter 2.12 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Department of Infrastructure and Development B and hereby is amended by repealing the crossed-out language. So now Section 2.12030 will strike out any reference to fire, so on line 26, deleting "fire," and on line 27, deleting the word "fire," and on lines 28, 29, removing, "The city fire marshal shall report the results of the fire plan reviews and preoccupancy functions to the director of Department of Infrastructure and Development." Section 2, which is amending Chapter 2.14 of the Salisbury City Code entitled Housing and Community Development Department, B and hereby is amended by repealing the crossed-out language. So Section 2.14030, line 20 -- I'm sorry, line 36 and 38, deleting the word "fire." Those are the changes.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Would you like some water?
I got it. I made it to the end.
Thank you.
Deep breaths.
I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2763 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2763 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Ms. Boucher. At this time, Ms. English, do we have any requests for comment?
I do not have any.
Okay. Thank you. Does anybody who came in late want to speak? Just asking. Okay. Hearing none. We're now go on to administration comments. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to say we had a great event a couple hours ago. Great to see you up there at the top of the Ross, the topping-out ceremony for a symbol of a huge investment in the heart of our city, a symbol of a shift from sprawling growth patterns to smarter investment, and, you know, the belief that, if you listen to the remarks that Mr. Simpson made, the belief that, you know, when government sets the vision and the example, that others will follow. And I thought it was a beautiful moment, so thank you for that. Also, nice to see that sunset from the top of that building. Also want to note that I received an email just before the start of this meeting from Sherri, the acting or interim executive director at Trash Free Maryland, just congratulating the council and the city on the passage of the plastic bag ban. So wonderful news that there's continuing push around our state, and hopefully it'll be statewide law at some point. Last thing I wanted to point out is this Friday, just a reminder that we have our annual holiday party, so hope I'll see everybody there, holiday party and awards banquet. So hope to see everybody at the Civic Center this Friday.
Thank you. Ms. Glance, would you like to add anything?
I'll just extend another thank you to all the folks that showed up to show their support for the plastic bag ban. It has been a long time in the making and was not an easy lift for our green team, but they chipped away at it and did a ton of research, and I'm very grateful for their efforts. But now we move into the education phase, which I'm sure will be more challenging than getting to this point, so we'll need everybody's efforts in getting that complete.
Can I note one thing? Just an anecdote. So I was at Acme the other day, and I was checking out, and I was prepared for whatever might come, as often will, at the checkout counter at Acme. And I was standing there, and she was bagging and talking to me, the lady working there at Acme, and she said, "You know." And I was like, "Oh, boy, here we go." She said, "You know, I really wish you would also ban plastic bags at grocery stores." I said, "I got good news for you. They're not exempt." And she said, "No, no. I read the Daily Times article." And she said, "No, no, I read the Daily Times article. We're excluded." I'm like, "Oh, I don't think that was in there." And she's like, "Well, I didn't see us included." And I said, "Well, I assure you, there is no exemption for grocery stores, because one plastic bag is the same as another, is the same as another. And so we want to get them all out of our river and out of our bushes and everywhere else there." So public education is going to be critical. You're 100% right, and I know we got the team to get there.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Boda?
Looking forward to the holiday party and awards banquet this Friday night. That's why I'm working tonight, so that I could be off Friday for that. So that was the sacrifice there. I really wanted to be off today. But other than that, no, I just hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving with their family. And, you know, we had some good family time this weekend, and looking forward to getting through another Christmas.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I just would like to commend again this young man who was so brave to run in a house with smoke and fire to save his two-year-old sister. I don't know how many of us adults would have been brave enough to even do that, but I commend him to the utmost. I know he's so tired of hearing, being on the news or being in the paper, but we need more people like him. And you know, the word says you learn from a child. So we're learning from our kids to be brave and to be courageous. I would also like to say, I'm looking forward to the Christmas party, because I'm feeling a whole lot better than I have been. So I'm ready to slide across the floor. But no, and the Christmas parade is this weekend also. So be there. With bells on, we're gonna all be there. I don't think, I don't know, you're walking? You're not gonna be there, are you? Well, whatever. We'll be, we'll, we'll, we'll hold, we'll hold the fort down for you. We'll hold it down. But I'm just, this young man has been on my heart, so I just, I'm just so thankful that he did save his sister. And I'll see you at the Christmas parade. I know I will, with your bags. I know y'all have a float, don't you? You don't have a float?
You're not telling.
Missed opportunity.
Do y'all have a float?
We don't, but that would be pretty fun.
Yeah, that would be pretty fun.
Well, you got three days.
You got three days? Yeah, you got three days. You got enough bags there, I see. But, you know, I'd just like to thank everybody for coming to our meetings and encouraging us to continue to do what we do. Thank you.
Angela?
Most everything has already been said. I won't be in the parade, but I will be a spectator, thank you. But as always, we're very, very low and desperate for blood. If you're healthy enough and you're fortunate, that you're healthy and your family's healthy, please, please donate blood. Thank you.
Michelle?
Just looking forward to the parade and the Christmas party, and I hope everybody has recovered from Thanksgiving. I know I spent the weekend with boxes of decorations, so I hope everybody else has had an easier time than theirs.
Thank you. Couple things. One, I'll second, as I always do, Angela's call for blood, and please, if you are able to do that. It was interesting. Usually, we joke about the fact that we get some negative feedback occasionally. And I think it's, it's to everyone's credit in this room, plus a lot of other people, that I think I received probably 15 to 20 emails favoring the plastic bag ban. And I got one email that I recognized at the State of the City in a slightly sarcastic manner. And I also had, I won't mention what restaurant, but I was at a restaurant eating breakfast, and the manager, the owner, came out and sat next to me and said, "This plastic bag thing." He said, "It's terrible." And I said, "Why is it terrible?" He said, "Well, you know, that's the only way we can serve our takeouts, and it shouldn't really apply to us." And I used one of the mayor's lines, "A plastic bag is a plastic bag." And he said, "Well, you know, we have to pay for that." I said, "No, you don't. The customer gets charged 10 cents." And I said, "And by the way, they pay for the plastic bags too, because you add that into your cost structure when you, so it doesn't affect your profit." And then he sort of looked at me and stuttered, and then I said, "And by the way, you know, the Chamber of Commerce supported this legislation." And at that point, he says, "Well, thank you." And he got up and went back to the back. But it is a good thing, and it is about time. And I can't wait to drive down Eastern Shore Drive and not see any bags in the fences and the trees. So thank you all again for coming and participating. This is what government is all about, sitting out there, not sitting up here.
That's right.
We're just implements in order to get things done. So thank you for all you've done. Keep up the good work, and we'd love to see you again when there isn't anything that's on the agenda for you. So thank you again. And with that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Real quick, can I just say, we've got some guests who arrived in the room, scouts from PAC 151. And they came tonight, we're going to be over in the mayor's office after this, but they came tonight to see government in action, and I think it's a pretty good night, particularly when you can see a display, a demonstration of just what government is trying to assist with the problem we're trying to assist with, the policy that was adopted into law tonight.
Great. Welcome, guys. Where are you? Raise your hand. Stand up. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it. One, one more item. Did anyone, it was this group that was here, I'm not sure the same people were here, but did anybody lose a watch on any chance? What color was it?
Black.
You win. I've got your watch. After the meeting, just come up. With that, everybody, thank you. Hope you had a great Thanksgiving, and we are adjourned.